This meeting will not be called for orders. This is our regular meeting of the City of Southfield, being conducted on Thursday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
President.
Brightwell.
Here.
We have Cruz absent, excused, and Fraser excused. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
And Taylor.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Will we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item we have is under our consent agenda. Well, we have the authorization to purchase the cold patch for Streets and Highway Division. City Administrator, do we have a presenter?
Yes, I believe Mr. McReen is here, and I can also field the request. We're -- the item is on the agenda, it's considered routine. We're requesting to buy cold patch materials from Lakeland Asphalt Corporation of Michigan in the amount of $70,000, $70. Funding is in the major streets in our maintenance account. This item is considered routine, therefore it was presented on the consent agenda for council action this evening.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? None, okay. Are we prepared to vote or? May I have a?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda item, A, authorization to purchase cold patch for Streets and Highway, for the Streets and Highway Division.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to purchase cold patch for Streets and Highway. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have. Thank you. Next, we have our public hearing and site plan, which we will have the adoption of the 2022-2026 Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Parks and Recreation is here requesting the opportunity to hold this public hearing for the adoption of the 2022 to 2026 City of Southfield Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Parks and Recreation contracted with OHM Advisors for the development of a comprehensive five-year plan. The master plan allows us the opportunity and qualifies the department for MDNR grants for acquisition and park improvements. The plan has recently been completed for the next five-year period, 2022 to 2026. This plan has been available for public review for 30 days and was approved by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on January 19th, 2022. I would like to acknowledge as well that we do have two of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board members here tonight with us, Janine Reese, who is our chairwoman, and Brandon Gray, who is a longstanding board member. Also here with me tonight is Chris Riggert from OHM, who will be presenting an overall summary highlighting the master planning process, including the community engagement, and a list of potential projects and wishes from our residents. So at this time, I'd like to ask Chris if he'd come up and make the presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, the Counsel.
Good evening.
Is there a presentation that's able to be shown?
You mean with the overhead?
Uh huh.
Mm-hmm. Just gotta. Could we turn?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was sent to Clerk. That was for the, for the meeting Monday night, so it is, it is there for.
I also have my laptop available if that's easier.
Sure.
It'll be just a moment, please.
No problem.
Is there any other parts that you can be telling us about while we wait for the presentation? Do you have anything else?
While we're waiting, I can note.
Chris, I'd like to just comment to Counsel. I want to remind you that the driver on this schedule was driven by the state's announcement from the governor that $150 million was available. We quickly moved in September to retain OHM. Because of the work that they had recently completed for the city at the Beechwood Center, they had a wealth of information that had been gathered. If this process moved very quickly, and it did, a lot of appreciation for staff and OHM and the timeline that they completed it. But that original timeline, we start in October, wrap up, and we are completing the project in order to get it to the state by February 1st.
Is there a place to plug in, or do you have a flash drive?
Does Chris have it?
He's gonna use his. Brad, is it appropriate to bring Counsel up to speed on the Carpenter Lake grant? While Chris is pulling up the presentation, so I would take the opportunity to bring it up to speed. As you know, we received a grant from the state for $600,000. Thank you, Councilman Hoskins, for all of your help. But we received a grant for $600,000. We just received the letter this last week. It's a letter of agreement for the award of the $600,000. So my next steps will be to come to Counsel so that I can get your permission to enter into that agreement, and then we receive those monies. Just a couple of guidelines on that. We receive 50% of that $600,000 at the signing of the agreement, and then we receive the other 50% at the completion of the project. We do not have to complete the project, I believe, in a year. I think we have, if I'm not mistaken, the answer is just. Yeah, we have a seven-year window. Not that it would take seven years, mind you, but we do have a seven-year window to complete that project. And just to refresh your memory, at Carpenter Lake, that grant covered the expansion of the parking lot, and so we would be expanding the parking lot by a number of spaces and redoing the surface there that's gone through some troubles. But it will also give construction to a pavilion site or a shelter site for about 25 people, and the purpose of that is for classroom and education. And then either attached to that, depending on how our drawings and plans go, will be flush toilets, so we'll have restrooms there. So we're really excited about that grant. Just while Chris is pulling that up too, and I have a couple minutes, we just received the bids back for playgrounds for Bedford, Freeway Park, and Civic Center. And so we are evaluating the bids right now, and we'll be bringing it back to you in February as well. So those are some projects that are going on, and of course, Miller Sims will be on Monday night. We've got Black History Month events coming up for the month of February, and I know that you all received that information from Stephanie in our department, our marketing analyst, that gives you an update of those. We'll continue to give you updates on the events and on programs that are going on, so thank you.
Ninety more seconds. Do you have ninety more seconds to add?
Ninety more seconds.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Regarding the shelter at Carpenter Lake, would that be available for groups that wanted to have a meeting there or a picnic?
Well, we probably will be discussing that, just because it hasn't even been built. So the look of it, what it has there, and what it houses, we certainly do not want to, I don't believe, want to get into picnic shelter rentals there. It won't be that size.
Okay.
But I can imagine that, you know, certainly if we have a need for those kinds of meetings and gatherings, it would be no different than a classroom, right? We would book a bus coming in for an educational session, so that's a really good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Brightwell.
Ms. Fields, what's the potential cost for the flushing of toilet in that area?
A flush toilet?
Yeah, what is the, I think you indicated that that would be part of the grant, it'd be something.
Yeah, I don't remember the break, yeah, I don't remember the breakdown of just the restroom area. I don't have that information, so I don't want to pull it out of the air. But the $600,000 grant, $600,000 grant does cover that entire project. So I know that the parking lot is a great expense. Shelter, not as much as the bathrooms. So always with, building in the infrastructure and the water and sewer, so yes, yes. That's where the cost, yep, that's where the costs will come in.
Pipeline coming in there would be expensive.
Sure.
Are we done? All right. Sure. That's right. Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, the Counsel. Apologies for the delay. Someone always told me it's never a good meeting without a technical difficulty, so thank you for your patience. My name's Chris Riggert, I'm the project manager with OHM Advisors. With me, I'm joined by Summer Woods of Woods and Loss Effect, who joined our team drafting the plan and assisting our team with community engagement. I'm excited to present this plan to you. It's been in the works since last September, and there's been a lot of hard work put into it. And what I have prepared is a short presentation, maybe 10 minutes or less, that provides an overview of our process as well as the plan outcomes. Here we go. To begin, an overview of what is a departmental master plan. This is a process which inventories and evaluates parks and programs offered by the city. It helps uncover and discover needs throughout the process and establishes goals and objectives for the following five-year period. Importantly, this is driven by the leadership of Director Fields and her team, as well as from evaluations that have been conducted of the park, and most importantly, by residents of Southfield who have engaged throughout the process. Why would a department undertake this plan? It provides transparency in the investment into Parks and Recreation over the next five years, but also importantly, and as Mr. Zorn identified, is a requirement for the City of Southfield to be eligible for Parks and Recreation for MDNR funding over the next five-year period. The process was a four-phase process, starting with a launch, visioning, refinement, and review. You can see from this slide where the public was able to influence the process, starting with a stakeholder session on October 20th, two open houses open to the community during October 27th and 28th. During that time period, which is not shown on this slide, was an online survey. A 30-day review period was conducted throughout the month of December, and there was a public hearing held on January 19th at the Planning Commission, and tonight is also a public hearing. What do we do within each one of these phases? The first, to launch the project, we updated the community description, which included things like population change and demographic information, physical information of the community. We also conducted inventory of the parks within Southfield, which included descriptions of facilities, assessment of the conditions of the facilities, as well as assessment of the barrier-free accessibility for each facility. The report also includes an update on the administrative structure and funding for the department. During the visioning phase was when the most amount of public participation and input was gathered. We conducted a robust communication and marketing outreach effort, which included television ads on Southfield Television, print ads. We had ads in the Southfield Sun, the Oakland Press. We also had an ad in Southfield Living, which went to every resident in the City of Southfield. We had digital postings online on the city website, as well as social media ads. There were physical postings throughout the community in the form of posters in this facility, in other parks' facilities, as well as lawn signs, which you can see the image on the right, at park facilities and throughout the community that links people to this effort, and also included a social media boost on Instagram and Facebook to reach as many folks as possible. Once we were able to reach folks, we linked to an online and paper survey, so it was available both online and in paper format, which could be, the paper format was available here and at Beechwoods. We conducted the stakeholder meeting and two public community open houses. Using that information, we then entered the refinement phase, which is where the, in collaboration with Ms. Fields' team, goals and objectives were drafted, and the action plan was drafted as well. And the last phase was what we're calling the review phase, where we are now, which included the 30-day review period, in which any resident could provide comments of the draft plan. And we are now on our path to approvals, this being our last stop. Prior to this, we had a study and study meeting and a public hearing at Planning Commission, and we appear here for a final public hearing for this body. So the plan itself contains 11 goals, each with numerous objectives. Rather than list all 11 per year this evening, we have the highlights of what the plan seeks to accomplish. The first is to focus investment throughout the system rather than on solely large signature projects. This means making sure that every resident in the city has access to a high-quality park, regardless of where they may live in the city. And projects that come out of this, some of which have started in earnest, include things like signage updates, beautification of parks, a development of a consistent materials palette, such as benches, litter receptacles, and bike racks, new playground, updated playgrounds, updated basketball courts, and increased accessibility for parks so that anybody, regardless of ability, can utilize Southfield's park system. In addition to making sure that all parks across the system reach a baseline level of quality, there are some signature projects and studies included within the plan. One point is to utilize underactivated parks. We heard from residents attending our open house, during that week, we had all parks in the system up on the wall so anybody could see the parks and provide comment. One of the things we heard from folks was they didn't even know that some of these things were parks in the city. And that's because they didn't include, or they weren't developed in a way that residents were able to use them. So one example of a study that came out of that is a study of Valley Woods Nature Preserve. And so there's a study and associated investment in the following years after that study. In addition, are some signature projects in the city, including an indoor pool and recreation center, a dog park, expanding the trails network, improvements to the civic center front lawn, and continuing to develop the Beechwoods Park following the master plan effort from last year. And lastly, some other points that are sort of overarching of all goals and objectives is to preserve and protect the environment and build resilience into park operations and facilities, to continue to generate partnerships with organizations and neighboring communities, to increase the impact and efficacy of the park and park system. And lastly, to bring parks to people. That means continuing to manage the Parks and Rec Department in a responsible manner, to continue to expand wellness and education opportunities for residents, and to continue to plug into economic development opportunities so that Parks and Recreation can be an important feature within all city aspects, not just in Parks and Recreation. So that's the nickel tour of the overview. And before I open up for discussion, we have been collecting comments throughout this period. We will be conducting one final revision to the plan, and so we will collect your comments this evening and incorporate them into that plan. I want to make sure that those are written, read into the record, so you know what plans are coming, or what changes are coming. The first is on page three, to correct the name of Dr. Geraldine Stevens Gunn, to have EDD at the end of her name to identify her position. On page 18, we added the definition to Land and Water Conservation Fund at the request of the Planning Commission. We are adding a description for the Field Zone to Partnership Facilities, which begins on page 22. That was omitted from the original report. We're swapping out a photo on page 43. We are coordinating the text on page 56 in the report to coordinate with the appendix. This revises the text to reflect that we received over 400 responses and over 1,400 individual clicks of the online survey link. And lastly, as a confirmation, that was a request by the Planning Commission that there is a study and investment plan for Valley Woods Nature Preserve on page 73. With that, that concludes my presentation, and would welcome a comment and discussion.
Okay. So no one else is going to speak? I can open up the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing for the adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this topic, please stand and come up to the podium for your comments. Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, do we have any comments? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. So just so I'm clear, tonight we are approving the master plan as presented?
You're approving the draft, and any revisions that you desire will be incorporated before it is uploaded on February 1st, this coming Tuesday.
This is the draft?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you made mention about the 11 goals. Where can I find the 11 goals in this draft? I don't, I'm not counting 11 on this document. I'm assuming the 11 goals means the 11 things that we're trying to accomplish?
Beginning on page 64 is a section entitled Goals and Objectives, Chapter Eight. And following that, it is listed as Goal 1 through 11.
Okay, and I apologize, my tabs fell off.
That's okay.
The section regarding the swimming pool, that's, that's within the 11 goals, right, on page? Where are we?
So the real meat of where, you know, the action is the action plan, which begins on page 72, and that includes the planned capital investment. And the study has identified. Under, well, there's a Aquatics Pool Splash Pad and the value of $1.5 million identified in 2023, and another $1.5 million identified in 2024.
Wasn't there discussion regarding a pool, an indoor pool, or is that not part of this plan?
No, that's, that would be wrapped up in the study for the new recreation facility of $30,000 in 2023, and then the $3 million between 2023 and 2024 would constitute investment into, into a pool facility. And I don't know if you have anything else to add?
I do have something to add. Because what, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I mean, I read this document, and thank you, it's, it's pretty informative. Found it a little confusing in a few places, but I would, we've talked in this community a lot about a zero-depth pool, and all I kept seeing in here was an enclosed indoor pool. Now, many years ago, there was a study, and maybe Mayor Seiver can help me, of putting like a dome over the pool, and I don't know where that study went, and I don't think it was that cost prohibitive as, it wasn't as much as what this one is. But I personally would love to see, again, a zero-depth pool, and if we could enclose it, that would be great. You know, we're, our senior population, it's easier to get in and out of the pool if they're going to bring their grandchildren. It's just that everyone's going that route, and I didn't see anything about that in the study. I really would like to see that added, but if you can add why that wasn't put in, or my colleagues have any comment on that? I think what Chris was implying is the pool itself, whether it be an outdoor pool, whether it be a splash pad to fill in that place, the civic center pool is being addressed in the master plan. I can give you a little bit more specific information. Right now, without getting too far ahead of myself here, our pool is not in good shape right now, at all, and we all know this, but it's really come to a head this last season. If we were to take, I've had many questions, if we were to take something and cover the pool the way it is, even if we added zero depth to it, the design of the pool, the amount of water that we have there that we have to guard, the amount of chemicals, it is not, it is very cost prohibitive. It is, it's archaic in design, is the easiest way to say it. We had a study done through Robertson Brothers Pools about two or three years ago. Don't quote me, I can find out for sure, because every, I would come before you and say we've got some repairs for the pool because we're trying to keep what we had together, right? We don't have $2 million, $3 million, $4 million to invest, and so we're trying to keep what we have. Because what, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I mean, I read this document, and thank you, it's pretty informative. Found it a little confusing in a few places, but I would, we've talked in this community a lot about a zero-depth pool. And all I kept seeing in here was an enclosed indoor pool. Now, many years ago, there was a study, and maybe Mayor Seiber can help me, of putting like a dome over the pool. And I don't know where that study went, and I don't think it was that cost prohibitive as, it wasn't as much as what this one is. But I personally would love to see, again, a zero-depth pool, and if we could enclose it, that would be great. You know, we're, our senior population, it's easier to get in and out of the pool if they're going to bring their grandchildren. It's just that everyone's going that route, and I didn't see anything about that in the study. I really would like to see that added, but if you can add why that wasn't put in, or my colleagues have any comment on that?
I think what Chris was implying is the pool itself, whether it be an outdoor pool, whether it be a splash pad to fill in that place, the civic center pool is being addressed in the master plan. I can give you a little bit more specific information. Right now, without getting too far ahead of myself here, our pool is not in good shape right now, at all, and we all know this, but it's really come to a head this last season. If we were to take, I've had many questions, if we were to take something and cover the pool the way it is, even if we added zero depth to it, the design of the pool, the amount of water that we have there, that we have to guard, the amount of chemicals, it is not, it is very cost prohibitive. It is, it's archaic in design, is the easiest way to say it. We had a study done through Robertson Brothers Pools about two or three years ago, don't quote me, I can find out for sure, because every, I would come before you and say we've got some repairs for the pool because we're trying to keep what we had together, right? We don't have $2 million, $3 million, $4 million to invest, and so we're trying to keep what we have together. And one of the questions that we always have is marcite, right? We have to marcite the pool. The shell of the pool can crack at any time when it becomes older, when you take all the water out, and we have to take all the water out to re-marcite that pool. It costs about $100,000 just to marcite the pool. That's off the top of my head. It's more than that, but it's $100,000 to marcite the pool. Our problem is, we've got a gutter system that's also very old, so the gutter system needs to be repaired, and that costs over a million dollars. So if we were even to repair what we have, which we don't want to do, if we were to repair that, it's going to cost between $1.5 to $2 million to put that new framework in there. So as Councilwoman Banks says, a zero-depth pool is whatever it is, whether it's outdoors, whether it's indoors, it makes it more accessible. We have older adults who use wheelchairs, we have our residents who use walkers from time to time, we have small children that want to enter the pool and exit the pool. You know as well as I do, we've got older adults who are using the exercise class for aquatics. I can fill that pool five days a week with 50 seniors at 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock doing exercise, but now getting out of that pool is very, very difficult. So we've come to a place where we really have to have some serious discussion on how we want to go forward. The pool, I'll come to you this month in February and talk to you about the repairs that are needed in order to even open up that pool. It is going to be cost prohibitive. Anything that we do, we have to close the pool, we have to close the season, even if we were to make a repair. I had a lot of discussions with Administrator Zorn last year. We spent about $30,000 to open up the pool last year. It would have not been a good idea, coming off of a very debilitating pandemic, to say the least, for our residents who are now able to come outside, other pools are opening up. Last year would not have been the year to say, you know what, it's just, it's just cost prohibitive, we're not going to do it. So we opened up the pool, got another season out of it, as short as it was, but we were able to offer swimming to our residents. Now we're here this year, and we've been getting some assessments from some vendors, and so I have a lot of information coming to you. Your point in addressing this in the master plan is, I think it's in 2023. We're in 2022, and we have to do it now. So we will be addressing that. We will be moving forward with having conversation about, you know, the difficult part is Parks and Recreation has gone 20-some years without improvements, right? There hasn't been a lot of capital improvement, not because we don't have needs, not because Parks and Recreation doesn't want to go out and build, but because there was no money. So we have just righted the ship in Parks and Recreation where we're not going into our fund balance. We also have opportunity with the COVID recovery funds in being able to do what our residents want to do, and what half the nation wants to do is get outdoors. That space has never become more valuable than it is today to be outside, whether it's at a pool, at a park, wherever, it's being outside and being healthy. So for us, we are going to have to have some serious conversation on how we want to move forward with that pool that's right next to an ice arena. So do we build a separate pool? Is it outdoors? I will come and talk to you, and I'll tell you the pros and cons of that. Being outside is wonderful, three months out of the year. Finding lifeguards for three months for 90 days is very difficult. It doesn't mean we can't do it, but the retention of those lifeguards for year-round comes much easier if we can offer them year-round work, year-round swimming lessons. If you've come from a pool, as I did, or from a city that had an indoor and an outdoor pool, you really are training your kids. So when they come for swimming lessons, guess what they want to do? They want to be a lifeguard, they want to be in a swim team. So the retention and the recruitment for those staffing folks for an indoor pool is much easier than for three months outside. I'll bring you, I'll bring you, as Fred's favorite word is the pro forma on that. So when we have a 90-day operation, how much revenue are we bringing in, and how much does it cost us to bring those services, as opposed to an indoor pool that's year-round? So we have this indoor pool that's right next to an ice arena. So we could go on and on and on. So you can understand why it's not, it's not, not that it's simple to replace a pool, but where it's at, what it's next to, the parking here is very congested in the summertime. We've all been here in the summer when we got tennis and volleyball and the Miracle Field. We've got the pool going on. So if we bring this really cool facility to our residents, a lot of people are going to come. Businesses are now going to stay around and swim and bring their families, and we're going to have to have a place to park. So I will be addressing it, we will be addressing it as a city, we have to. But it is, it is not as simple as just replacing the pool. We're going to have to really have some long, hard discussions and conversations that are all very exciting and very important, but really how we make our next steps is very, is very crucial, because we want to put something here for our residents that's sustainable. We don't want to bring together, now we've had this financial spot in Parks and Recreation where we're doing all right, and then we create a facility where we are losing money. And I'll be explaining to you in front of all of you again in four years, why it is that I can't make money on a pool. So we really want to be responsible fiscally and to our residents on what they want. And you're absolutely right. I have, that's the biggest, that's the largest, I would say, volume of folks that come to me and have talked to me since the day I walked in the doors, we want a pool. We want a pool. So we will be addressing it in the master plan, we will be addressing it here this next month, coming to you with some more details. But we really would like to know too, from counsel, what your desires are as city leaders. You're talking to the folks just like we are. We get, I get phone calls all the time. We're very accessible, we're in the parks, we're in the programs, and so we talk to people all the time, but you do as well. And so, you know, hearing from you and wanting to know what your desires are for our residents going forward, for their aquatics programs. For me, having a pool in the city is very important because I don't care if kids ever go swimming again, I want them to know how to swim. And that's very important for us in Parks and Recreation and equipping our kids to be safe, so.
If I could add, one item is the, as it pertains to this effort and this plan, the MDNR will be reviewing our action plan, and the important aspect is that there is a significant amount of money allocated to it. Whether that is, you know, the final dollar value is not as important as the fact that it is identified as a priority. So I think as we move forward, you know, that $1.5 million could grow, it could shrink, likely grow, but it is identified at least as a priority within 2023 and 2024.
But the, what's identified is an enclosed pool, correct?
It says aquatics pool slash splash pad. So it doesn't define whether it's indoor or outdoor.
So if it says splash, could that also include like the Beechwood area, or no?
Not for that site. For this, I think for Civic Center site, we're very specific to the site being, needing attention. And again...
Where is that on, where, what page is that on, please? I'm sorry.
Page 72.
72?
72 is the action plan, that includes the dollar, dollar value investments, yep.
And please note, one of the important parts that Chris just talked about is it's a placeholder. So it doesn't say in that year, you have to spend that money on that. It is a placeholder so that if a grant becomes available, or some monies become available, and we want to capture those dollars, one of the first stops they say, or that they look at, is, did you include that in your master plan?
Okay, okay.
Or are you just coming up with this idea?
Okay.
Because the money's available.
And I thought it said indoor, I'm sorry.
So even if it comes at a different year, Councilwoman Banks, even if it comes in a different year, if there's an opportunity, they just want to see that it's in the plan, that we've thought about it, that there's been conversation, that our residents, it resonates for our residents, that that's something that they want, and it's not just two people's idea of, let's just go for it, let's build an indoor, another indoor ice arena. There's not an indoor ice arena on here for building forward. So we want to make sure that anything that we heard from our residents is captured in this plan, including your comments, so that if there are dollars available, number one tool that they look at, are you qualified? Is it in your master plan? It most certainly is. Boom, we're on to our next step.
Okay, okay, so let me just, you know, score more time, so I'm sure. So does aquatics mean it can be a zero-depth pool, it can be an enclosed pool, it can be any kind of pool? Because in parentheses, it just says pool slash splash pad. So are they going to hold that to us, or can we add on to that to maybe say zero depth, comma, enclosed, comma?
Can we add that?
We can add that, sure, we can add. So they're specific and feel comfort, more comfortable going forward that it says zero depth, we can certainly add that.
And if you want to say enclosed also, that's fine.
Sure.
We have been talking about the pool in this city for years.
Yeah.
And I personally get a lot of calls. I have a lot of seniors that say they can't use our pool, they have to go to Farmington Hills, they have to go over here, because they, if they can get in the pool, they're embarrassed they can't get out of the pool.
Yes.
They can't bring their family here. I mean, I just think we've got to be creative, come up with something, and I really think the time is now. I mean, Birmingham has this unbelievable facility for parents with babies. Bring them, let's teach them how to swim. You know, it would be nice to see an indoor pool also, or, like I said, a dome. I believe the study we had many years ago was a dome that opened up, and for some reason, I want to say it was like $500,000 or $600,000. I wish I could remember who did that study, but it's got to be somewhere in the city, the study on the golf, on the pool dome.
Sure.
And then also, if we do close the pools down, the high schools have pools. Are we able to contract with them?
I'm glad you brought that up.
To utilize the pools, because I really think it would be a disaster to not have a pool open during the summer season for the residents in this community. So is it available to rent if we make a decision that we are going to improve our pool? And has anyone approached the school?
To the chair. We have gone down the road, if you will, to the high school pools. If you've spent any time in those high school pools, they are not accessible. In order for you to make your way from the locker room to enter the pool, it's very, very difficult. We, and I don't say that because we don't have the experience, we have had the experience. We tried to have some senior swim classes there. We had a couple seasons where we trained our lifeguards there, and I can, I don't know what the maintenance has been on it. I don't know what the finances and investment has been for the pool. Oftentimes, when dollars are cut short, we're not paying as much attention to some of those amenities. I don't know, and I haven't been to the pool in the last year. I just know the history that we have had, up until this point, we have exhausted those attempts there and tried to house programs, and from our residents and from our staff. It just wasn't appropriate going forward. Now, I can tell you that doing some phone calls a little bit and looking at some other communities, whether we could contract and house some of our programs, like our senior swim program, so that maybe we could go to Oak Park, I've already talked to the director there, that's as a just in case, we like to be prepared. We do know that people won't be happy about us closing the pool if, in fact, we have to do that for a summer, but quite honestly, in order to make some of the repairs, I believe we would almost have to do that going forward, and that's if we spent the kind of money that they're quoting us right now. So I'll be bringing that to you in February. But there are some pools, I think there's a pool on Evergreen, Cranbrook Pool, and we're familiar with the gentleman who operates that program there. And certainly, we want to be able to take care of our residents, they're going to want to learn about swimming lessons, right? And they're going to want a place to go. We had to do that with Farmington last year. We had a lot of people who wanted swimming lessons, and we just didn't have the staff to be able to do that. So instead of just saying, here's your refund, we worked with Farmington Hills to be able to take care of our residents. And you're absolutely right, we have a lot of seniors who, that's the first thing they say to us, is we go to the Caustic Center, and we take some of the classes there because we can get in and out of the pool. So we definitely, this isn't because we haven't wanted to build a pool. I think you used the word earlier, we need to be creative. And creative is finding the dollars, right? We really need to find the dollars to be able to do that. And I'm all about creativity as well, and it's definitely an investment, and it's something that we would embrace going forward, but I believe it is in the details, right? What is it that we're going to build, and what are the expectations, and what are our residents, what are the benefits they're going to receive from that, from that investment? So.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if we could just add a few words to Aquatics, I...
Sure.
That would be fine with me, thank you.
Sure. And thank you.
Thank you for that conversation. I'm in total agreement with Councilwoman Banks, as we've had several discussions, and I'm glad all this came out, because I had asked for her to talk to us about it, and she let me know that we will, she will be bringing this back to us in February. But I get the same questions, and I've been here in the city, and for years, this has been one of our topics. The other thing that you started mentioning was that you were looking at other communities. During the time that we might have to close...
Sure.
We were looking at, like we do at the library, where we have partnerships with other...
Absolutely.
Where we could go at a reduced rate or something like that to use, especially like Hawk Hill over in Farmington, and a lot of us go there anyway, the Caustic Center and Birmingham, I believe, Oak Park, we have a lot of places that we can...
Absolutely.
Partner with, like we do at the library when we rent out books and things of that nature, if we know, it's just making sure that we have it as a priority.
Absolutely.
And that we want it, so it's something that we can look at. And in addition to spending the money, we also can look at grants and partnerships within the businesses, because it's how we present whatever it is that we want to do. But it is a need, it is a want, and it is something that the City of Southfield should have, so I'm in total agreement with that. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, I definitely appreciate the plan. I think it's some wonderful ideas, and it incorporates a lot of the things I've been hearing since I've been on council. And I appreciate Ms. Banks drilling down on her particular issue. In my experience, prior to coming, being elected official, we were, I've always been exposed to a lot of master plans and a lot of way forwards. They sit on the shelf, and things just die. So I want to see can we get a plan where we can get periodic updates on this master plan to council as we go forward, every year, until this whole thing is pretty much laid out. And that's just a implementation, and we can work it through Mrs. Zorn, or whatever we need to work it through, where you guys or someone appropriate person will come before council and tell us what has been, it could be quarterly, monthly, whatever, it all depends on the impact, the speed of, let's say, implementation. And if implementation is rapid or quick, a lot of things going on, we can make it a monthly, or every other two weeks or whatever. So that will, I will follow up with Mrs. Zorn or whoever needs to be followed up with, because I've seen million-dollar plans sit on the shelf, and corporate America should be the most efficient place in the whole world, because these plans were the most efficient place in the whole world, and nothing, you know, it's just, we just spent money. So, Mrs. Zorn, with respect to in this field, can you guys give us some kind of way you're going to report back to council about this on a regular basis of what is going on?
Sure, I think that, and I appreciate your comments, Councilwoman Brightwell, I think what's really nice about this plan, if you, we'll be coming before you with the rest of the city departments for the CIP plan, and you'll see that this Parks and Recreation Master Plan mirrors the CIP plan a great deal. And while the CIP plan is kind of a report to you on what we are... And while the CIP plan is kind of a report to you on what we are going to do in that year, it also gives a forecast of the following years of improvements. So that document stays current to action that we already have in place for city, right? For, because my budget echoes that. This master plan, while I hear you, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a Parks and Recreation kind of thing, too. They'll say you come up with all kinds of plans and then we, we get frustrated because then it sits on a shelf. Our master plan isn't sitting on a shelf. But our master plan is waiting in anticipation, right, of dollars, dollars available. So you will definitely hear from us when we have opportunities for grants. If you would like us to come, like halfway through the year or a yearly thing, however, however you wish. We certainly can on the master plan. But the CIP plan really is what we put in place for park improvements and projects that affect this board going forward and stays current. Because there's dollars allocated to it. Where with this master plan, there's no dollars in my budget allocated to that. In the CIP plan, there is. But this master plan, the dollars that are allocated to it are indicative of the level of project, right? So, and, and I think it's year four and five. You'll see significant monies for Valleywood Nature Preserve, right? Talked a lot to Terry Crowe. So it's all about creating pathways, right? Walking paths and bike paths. So we want to include that someplace in our documents. So if there's an opportunity citywide for a grant or investment, that boy, Parks and Recreation's got that in their plan, too. We got a team approach and a collaborative effort. So that plan, while it's, I, I understand what you're saying about sitting on a shelf, it's not going to sit on our shelf. We, we refer back to it. It is a tool that we use because it's our residents' voices, right? It's your voices, our residents' voices. But it also helps us, too, with our CIP plan.
Right. Well, I agree. Whether or not, if something is presented during the CIP presentation or whenever is there the presentation or there are dollars spent that is applicable to this particular document, during that particular presentation, I would want to know that it's referenced on page 42.
Sure.
You know, the CIP, this takes care of this, this segment of this plan. So whenever there is any money spent that is applicable to this master plan with-
Absolutely.
It could be the CIP at the, that annual thing. You have five or six items in there. That could, you could say that knocks out five or six of these on page 82, 52, 92.
I understand.
I just want to know, this gives me an assurance that this document is not going to be shelved and it just sit there and we'll look at it five years down the road. Another, another thousand of dollars to come up with another plan. It, 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 I was going to do something humorous that, that's typically in corporate America, how we spend money on plans.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, it, it just, but anyway. Whatever you spend any money that applies to something in this document or however, how frequent it is, if it's done quarterly or whatever. I just, I think council should know that-
Absolutely.
We are, we are working this particular document. We are working it by way of this document or by way, by this, this action here. But it goes back to-
Sure.
This, this particular plan. So that's, if, if nothing else is information, I can tell my constituents if they ask me something about it, I say, oh yeah, they're doing, they're working this. This is how it's being worked and this is how it's coming out. Or this is where it is today. And this is where it proposed to be, you know, a month in there, two months. So that's some kind of way I, I do want to get feedback. And, and I know the CIP, I see the CIP, and I praise the planning department for working that. And it's a very useful document. But it's not every time I can just associate something with a master document. So if you, you guys, that's, that's your hands on. Just let us know this is applicable for this item on this page or this, in this document.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I think if I understand you correctly, it's incorporating this master plan into our day-to-day operation and decision-making. And when we do incorporate it, making sure that we're telling you that here at council and when we're making our decisions, making sure that we reference back to, this was something in our master plan that we heard from our residents. This was something that we addressed in our master plan in 2022. So I, I appreciate those comments. And that's, it's good coaching. Thank you.
Exactly. Yes, and then we, we will be serving our constituents all the way around.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Fields, as you know, as our many discussions go, because of my love for Southfield parks and especially my kids, parks are important to me. So this plan, I did read it, cover to cover a few times. And there's a great deal of knowledge. And thank, thank you to your staff and the public and everyone else who, who contributed to it. The, the question that I have, there's, there's a lot of good stuff in here. Realistically, what percentage do you think could actually be accomplished just, you know, short of the, of the city winning the lottery and being able to accomplish everything? You know, obviously, this, it's like the, it's, it's like our CIP. It's a wish list. There's a lot of things in here that we know we are going to do. And then we have the things that we would like to do. Out of the things that we would like to do, do you know whether it's trying to go after grants or just things that we're actively budgeting for? Do you have a percentage of those wants?
No.
Can I take a, I'd like to take a stab in that.
I, I could say more than I will, but go ahead.
The, the plan identifies 27, over 27 million in projects. Sitting here, listening to the pool conversation, the new rec, Sterling Heights, Farmington Hills, over 20, I believe the number's over 22 million went into the Hawk. So the last few years, you finally got Parks and Rec to stop going into its fund balance. You're netting about $800,000 a year. If you just do some crude math, call the $800,000 a million, 20, you got 27 years worth of work. Five-year plan. However, every plan this city has done, this would be an interesting exercise. We've gotten an ROI. Chris, I, I was, tried to find it online. This plan cost us how much to produce?
I believe it's 34?
30, I thought it was 35.
Yeah.
So just, again, rough, rough math. And just think about this. It was a similar plan that brought the grant money in for Pebble Creek. The money in for Beechwood, the outdoor. There's been a cobbling of grants where this community got the money for Carpenter Lake. It was going through this planning process. I frequently remind council, Parks and Rec, a mileage rate of 1.5 mils, we're very fortunate to have. Tax base in 2010 goes from 3.6 billion down to 2.4. Call it a billion dollars lost, or 1.2 times 12 year, you've lost, you've had 15 million less to work with. So right sizing the ship. When, I've been with the city 13 years. Before I got here, the city had the acquisition of the old art center. That expenditure was put on Parks and Rec. The debt that came with that was put on Parks and Rec. This council, many of you made an incredibly difficult decision, shutting down Beechwood Golf Course. And we actually had one of the best years in golf at, at just having one course. So you're right sizing the ship and moving in the right direction. I feel real confident, and I, I've said this the last two, two meetings. In my 35 years in public sector work, I believe with what's happening as we look to recover from the, this pandemic, the money that's going, is here is going to be on like anything we've seen. We started this plan, ran a very hectic pace, had great sessions. I, I, I don't know if any, you know, how many of you got to make the pavilion, but you had an aerial view of every part. And hundreds of people went around and commented. And I, the most common thing I heard was, gosh, I didn't realize we had this many parks. We're, we're really fortunate. But with that comes the maintenance costs and the obligation, just like our roads and just like our facilities. These parks are 40, 50 years old. It's time to repositioning them. So the inventory, putting a value, treating it like any other asset, the life and, and making an investment. I believe the 35,000 you, you spent, you'll get 20, at least 20 times that. You'll pick up 700,000 to a million bucks. Do the crude math on 150 million. And I'm going to tell you, most cities aren't in the position to get this master plan. They're not going to be able to enter the race. MDNR is not going to consider their application. So if you just take a per capita basis, 10 million people, 150, we're going to, we should be able to position ourselves for at least 1.5. Factor in those other communities that haven't been able to do this. We're, we're in the race. And in December, council approved the John Grace Project. You're re, you're going to, that deal includes repositioning that, that part. We submitted a, a small grant to MISTHA for 75,000. It's these planning documents. Rick Lampy and Terry pulled out, hey, we could do this in Seminole. This sits the right census tract. It's council giving us this tool to work with and then adopting it. I do want to comment on the pool. Any pool, I believe you build today, you'd be just, I don't think anyone, any public entity would build a pool that doesn't have zero depth for ADA compliance. And we've got some challenges for the pool. Terry's heard me say this. I've been here 13 years and every year they've been telling me we're on the last leg of the pool. And they told me that in the first community I worked with and the, the, the last community I, I was with. And, you know, the, the first community, we did shut down one year. And we put 300,000 in and rebuilt the gutters. And we weren't smart enough to give it a zero depth because in 1994, we weren't thinking that way. So, you know, I, 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 I think this is about where we're going to go as a community, our aspirations. As I watched, and it's been really difficult in COVID, you know, it's not, usually we'd sit in meetings. But as I watched in the pavilion, very large room, and people come through and the scribes at every station and people getting input. I think we, we put together a good plan. It gets incorporated into our planning process and our budgeting. Nothing moves forward without council approving. And I think Councilman Brightwell is right. We, we can keep a scorecard. This was identified in this plan. And we're going to look for that dome study. I, I think that those studies are always fun to look at.
Yeah.
So those are my comments. You know, remembering another, you, you've lost a million, a million five a year. 12 years, 12, 18 million starts. That, that, that's about the price of building a new rec center had we had that. Had we went out and we're in a position. But that's not where we were at as a community. I think we've done some very innovative things over the years. Had monies going in. The Smart Zone put money into Pebble Creek, matched the MDNR grant. And, you know, that was done to save Parks and Rec money. The three and a half million we put in Beechwood was a general fund. And to my knowledge, I, I think that was one of the first real contributions the general fund made to capital investments. And those are the things we'll do. But this plan, you know, I, I'm, I'm thinking, without vision, the people perish. So.
Okay. It's just, you know, it was one of those where I'd like to know, great things can happen. How, how realistic is it? But-
I, I, I think this is going to be the best ROI on any plan in the city's history. And just because of where we're at in this time in history.
Well, I'm excited, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, the other, the last thing I wanted to, to ask, and this could be done after, you know, if there's any other questions. But did anyone from the Parks and Rec Board want to talk about the plan or anything like that?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. And I'm so glad you brought up Carpenter, Carpenter Lake because we were just talking about it this week. Senator Moss definitely worked hard on that. Representative Bowden as well, trying to get funding. And the governor gave her state-of-the-state address la, last night. And it's the beginning of our new budget season for, for this year. And so we, you know, these are things that we're thinking about now as we have, as we potentially have the opportunity at the state level to try to put in more requests for things for the city. So having something like this is very important. I'm glad that you can now take off Carpenter Lake in here because I'd like, all the funding here is taken care of. So that's one thing now. That's one, one thing out of the 27 million. And Fred, I think you touched on it. One of my questions was, how much, from the 150 million dollars, the criteria, has the state laid out the criteria? Clearly, this is part of it. But have they laid out other criteria for getting funding and how much the city could get?
It's coming, if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
And just this morning, I was on the phone with the representative from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I could tell, state staff are, are putting plans together on different things. I know Terry's had multiple conversations with a former Southfield employee and a good friend, Mary Karlock.
Mary Karlock at the state.
And she's giving us guidance and, and how to craft things. And Ms. Fields' expertise and her lifetime of connections. I know she's talking to people and OHM, what they've done with all their other municipal partners. We're, we're working at every angle. There will be a call for multiple projects that'll come out. I can tell you the state economic development folks are very focused on placemaking. A lot of these elements might not be an MDNR grant, but they may be things that fit that placemaking piece. The Berg, they're, you know, when they start talking historic preservation, there, there's another piece. I've mentioned the last two council meetings, we're positioning the, the city and hope by the end of this first quarter of this calendar year, they have a more in-depth conversation with council about Ickley and environmental climate resiliency, the new infrastructure bill. Because there are pieces in this piece that, you know, the, the, the Valleywoods path, that ties directly into stormwater management. And we can do certain things there. That's a, a site that's already been the recipient, working with Parks and Rec and our stormwater people on a, and a, and a demonstration grant, I think about 2010, 11. So there'll be other things we look at. And again, this avalanche and a different positioning of this country and, you know, are we going to address climate, the changes we're seeing on this planet?
Yeah. I mean, I won't belabor this. This was a great discussion, hearing everything that was said. I think we're on a good track. I mean, I'm also with Councilman Brightwell. It's good to, it would be good to see, like, here's everything that we've accomplished so far. Our little scorecard of things. Like I say, you can take, you can take Carpenter Lake off. That's one thing already. We're, we're rocking and rolling. But beyond that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Seiver?
Yeah. We've talked a little bit about this earlier. This is a great piece of work. I've, I've read the whole thing. I know how much effort went into, to this. And actually, having read a number of these in the past, I think this is the best that, that I've seen in my tenure here. The only thing, and, and we've talked about this. I know that this is flexible. It'll depend on funding. But I, I do just have to express my concern about a, for the Civic Center Recreation Area, a dog park study and development scheduled for '25 and '26. Those of us that were up for reelection this year, we heard over and over again. And I, I know that in an earlier conversation with you, you said that it didn't rank high on the feedback. But there are thousands of dogs in this city. You knock on doors and you hear the dog. And I know that many of them are not licensed. But perhaps if we had a dog park, we'd get more license. But I hear this over and over again. And I, I think those of us, Jason, Ari, Lenny, we heard it constantly. Um but I hear this over and over again, and I I think those of us, Jason, Ari, Lenny, um we heard it constantly. Um I would also suggest that that one be developed on the west side, perhaps at Beachwoods. Somebody called me, a matter of fact, yesterday and asked for a dog park on, again, uh at Beachwoods, knowing this was on the agenda tonight. And um and I've long advocated for Bedford Woods because you've got a a wall there and the distance from anybody's home is quite great. So uh again, I appreciate all the work that went into this. Uh and I am really just responding to the number of people that expressed an interest in this. And this isn't a new thing. People have been asking for this for years. And I have gone and visited dog parks, and honestly, the one um on off Cass Avenue in Detroit, I've never seen so many people or so many dogs in a little patch of dirt. Uh it's extremely popular. So again, thank you for this. Uh I hope that we can do something sooner than twenty-five and twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Brightwell, he has another comment.
Yeah, I'll echo what the mayor said. Uh I was elected in twenty fifteen, and back then, I was getting suggestions about dog parks from everybody. And when I ran again in twenty nineteen, people came to me actually suggesting certain places for ball, dog walks. So there, there is a, obviously, we have dogs, we have people who love dogs, and they would like to have that courtesy or that opportunity to walk their dog with other, like, dog owners, I guess is what it is. But I just echo what the mayor said. It's a, it's a universal need, um uh desire for dog walk. Well, dead, Madam Chair, uh oh, I was gonna make a motion, but I think Ms. Banks has a question.
I'm sorry. Okay, hold on one second. Councilwoman Banks?
Um yes, I, one final comment. Under the parks, I think it's starting on page twenty-eight and moving forward, example where it says Miller Park, is there a way in parentheses to put an address underneath these parks? I'm assuming this master plan is gonna be online somewhere for people to view. And if people were surprised how many parks we had in the city, um you know what? It just might be nice to say on the corner of Ten Mile and Evergreen or put an address there so people know where all of our parks are. And I think we can add a little line under each one of those parks?
That's a great point. It serves as a resource.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
If we give them an address, the mapping systems will pick them up too.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
Through the chair.
Very good, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Regarding the discussion on the dog park, um I just wanted to clarify that there is, there there actually was a study slated in the action plan for closer to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six timeframe. Uh there, and it was actually accelerated forward based off of the comments we received. Um it, there's a a ten thousand dollar study slated for twenty twenty-three and resulting investment in twenty twenty-four. Uh and I can say from the work on Beachwoods and also as a uh an owner of two dogs, I'm also a dog, a dog park advocate, and we did consider a dog park for uh Beachwoods for a number of reasons. It was identified as as not the best location, but there was a lot of really good discussion with community members about um the value of a dog park. And so um I think, you know, in our discussion, while we didn't, we may not have heard as much about a dog park in this specific effort, we heard plenty about it during Beachwoods. And so for that reason, the uh the study and resulting investment were accelerated in the plan.
Thank you, Mayor.
So what I have here then doesn't reflect what you just said. I I have
Okay, yeah.
On page seventy-two, I have the uh twenty-five, twenty-six on the dog park.
Okay. This must be, it must be an updated version, so that that is a revision.
That's all right.
It's a good point of clarification.
I just wanna clarify what I'm reading from, but thank you.
Thank you, and we'll we'll note that as a revision.
I appreciate your comments.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I like, I'd like to move that we adopt the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six Park Recreation Master Plan as presented.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the adoption of the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six Parks and Rec Master Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Aye's carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your comments, too. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, uh we have our agenda items for discussion and action. The first one is the maintenance contract for Motorola radio system.
Madam, Madam President, Meredith Morgan from the Police Department Dispatch is here to address that topic.
Good evening, uh council. Um the police department is requesting permission to renew our contract for maintenance on the radio system. This is specifically for the consoles and base stations, the consoles being in the dispatch center, the base stations at all the antenna sites throughout the city. Um it has been contracted with Motorola for for a very long time because we use Motorola equipment. And uh the maintenance contract that we had expired February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one, that was because we were doing the maintenance on the base stations and upgrading that to fiber. We ran into some issues, supply chain and that sort of thing that everybody else is running into at this time. So it was, it took a little longer than we expected to get that done. That work is now completed. Um and as we previously discussed with council when we brought other radio items, the city is gonna be migrating to the new Oakland County Public Radio System sometime this year. Um cut over is currently expected second quarter, third quarter of this year. Um and we are gonna continue, though, to maintain our current radio system for use by emergency management, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. Uh police and fire will be migrating to the new system. So the cost of the maintenance for the consoles that are in dispatch will cease at the time of cut over. Um this is because the county is gonna provide new consoles, and they will then own and maintain that equipment. So um the second year cost of the agreement isn't exact. It is for a full year, but we expect it to be less because at whatever cut over date we get those new consoles, we will no longer have to cover maintenance on those consoles. Uh and then going forward, the yearly cost is only expected to be six to seven thousand dollars to maintain that radio system for those three departments that I spoke of. So we're requesting permission to um enter an agreement for sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the first year of maintenance. And at maximum, if for some reason we don't get cut over, the second year is nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The cost for this is in the budget, as noted, and I'll take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Uh council? Councilman Brightwell?
Um, Mayor, uh but I'm a hundred percent agree with this, but I have a, this expired in February. Why does it just now come into us?
Well, um we previously had approved a project to upgrade the base stations um because the equipment was antiquated and then convert that from kind of phone line connection to fiber, city fiber connection. That project just recently completed because we had some issues with getting the equipment to finish that project. Um because we had that ongoing work, it, we just continued, Motorola just continued. If we needed maintenance, they were coming at the same rate as the contract. And then we we had agreed that we would just, you know, backdate the contract when it expired.
Okay, so this was more, this is, this was some kind of gentleman's agreement between the city and Motorola. Uh if if Motorola wanted to be a hard, you know, they could've, could've just dumped us and we wouldn't, wouldn't go out the creek or something?
Right, and you know, they were, they were actually doing the work with the uh upgrade, too. So um, you know, they had to, they were, they were the ones that actually had the problems getting the equipment because, you know, you're talking about technology, equipment, which has been very difficult to acquire timely, at least, but we do finally have everything installed.
Yeah, it's, I I understand the practical day-to-day issue you're dealing with. Uh but this is something that, um, believe, since I've been on council, and I've been around finance, since I've been on council, we've been trying to get a handle on these expiring contracts.
Yes.
And it, this is something that I feel, we we've talked about this, it should've bubbled up. The Finance Committee or someone in the city, this should've been on on our radar. This thing that expired, I mean, that's our system of tracking. And and I thought we had a better system of tracking citywide.
Okay.
And we don't, but I think, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go re-initiate that as being a priority for the Finance Committee to how we can get on top of these expiring contracts so we know about them and we know that they are there. This is, this is, this doesn't affect the PR, but this is an administrative thing that that we should really be aware of these various expired critical, this is a critical contract, I mean, uh for your operation, honestly. So, but anyway, uh that's, that's my own comment, but that's my concern. And I've, I've had conversations, we thought we, but anyway, thank you, man. I'm I'm supportive of this.
Anyone else? Okay, uh council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract documents on behalf of the city with Motorola Solutions.
Report.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the maintenance contract for Motorola radio systems. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the authorization to replace the data domain in the Technology Services Department.
Madam President, I'll field this item. Uh we are requesting to acquire uh from Dell Corporation um it's uh a new data domain server in the amount of sixty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Funding is available in the equipment revolving uh account. This is replacement of uh of one of our major servers um that stores data within our I T department. Sorry, our 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 director had a minor surgery and um and I thought we had another rep here. And it's a rather straightforward piece of equipment, uh the servers, uh you know, our data sits there and floats up and down between the cloud and is part of our overall system.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Dell is the approved vendor pursuant to a a collective bidding contract the city has.
Mr. Zorn, would you mind speaking closer to your mic?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hardly hear you, so I was interrupting you, and I apologize.
Yeah, Dell is the approved vendor we have where we buy our computers and that, you know, through, uh it's been bid through a cooperative agreement.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? No, okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the replacement data domain in the Technology Service Department as presented.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the authorization to replace the data domain into Technology Services Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Our next item is the expand the network auditing software for the improvement of the city's cybersecurity posture.
Madam President, Netrix is a software pro- uh product that the department uses to monitor um any changes within our software. It sends out notifications uh to our staff if if anything's going on. It is part of our continued cybersecurity village, you know, just staying on top of these things to make sure something doesn't happen. The uh, we're proposing, uh we're requesting authorization to acquire uh the the software from Netrix and for a three-year period, the amount not to exceed forty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars seventy cents or fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars twenty-three cents annually. Money for this uh is in the Technology Services Professional Services account. Uh future years would have to be approved by council as part of your annual budgeting process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, council? Thinking for discussion, okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the soft, the, to expand the network auditing software for the improvement of the city's cybersecurity posture.
Support.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to expand the network auditing software for improvement of the city's cybersecurity posture. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council, our next item is the authorization to purchase Westlaw online and print legal research products for the city attorney's office.
Good evenings, um city council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'll make sure. So um in the city attorney's office, we use an online research service, Westlaw. It's a proprietary database for lawyers and legal professionals. Um it's a subscription, um it's actually several companies, West Group and then Thomas, Thompson Legal Publishing, excuse me, Thompson Legal Publishing. It's been around since eighteen seventy. Back in two thousand nineteen, uh we were approved for a three-year subscription because Westlaw, each time we renewed, they wanted for three years. And at that time, we actually had a great savings because we had been using a lot of print material. Uh but now, most of it is online, and so it is now time for it to be renewed. Um I did run this by Fiscal Services, and each year, there'll be a five percent increase. So as you can see on the letter, I believe, um there's, the first year is gonna be the seventeen thousand eighty, and then year two, seventeen nine three four, and then the third year, eighteen eight three one. And as stated in the letter, we've been using uh Westlaw for at least twenty years. And it will be coming out of an account that's um magazines, books, et cetera. I think that's the old title, but we won't have too many books at this point. With, uh part of the subscription is that they will send updates um to the books that we still use, like Books of Evidence. And so with that, um I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh council? Councilman Hoskins?
Um, uh just two quick questions. Do we use, do we use LexisNexis or just Westlaw?
No, as a matter of fact, someone asked me that question. So Westlaw and LexisNexis, as you know, in law school, we were trained on both of those. And then certain legal entities, so our department, use Westlaw. You may have some law firms that use LexisNexis. And after I got that question, I did some research, and I, and I've always had Westlaw. Once I graduated from law school, everywhere I was at, it was Westlaw. And it depends on, I guess, the type of subscription, what you're searching. Westlaw is a subsidiary of Thompson Reuters, the publishing company that's been around since eighteen seventy. So um we've never used it, and all I know is Westlaw. But I did learn LexisNexis when I was in law school.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the last time I used uh LexisNexis. Westlaw's a little bit easier to use. And it goes to my other question. Is Westlaw, it's so in, like, in law school, you know, we had unlimited, you had unlimited searching, whereas when you go out, sometimes they charge, depending on your subscription, they charge you for, by the search. Uh we don't have that, right?
No, but our subscription is particular to us, and we sit down with a rep and they go over everything. And so there are certain things we can't do, and if I And if I say I wanna look up a case in California, it's gonna show me a box that says, okay, you can look at this particular case, but it's gonna charge you. So, we get a warning. So, it's based on our needs for the city attorney's office.
Okay. All right, it's all the questions I had.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell, did you have a question?
I think my question was answered. I was just asking whether or not our price was volume-based. Yeah, I think I got an answer that we do have a, based on our historical volume.
Correct. It's based on the needs that we present, we met with a representative that specializes in, you know, governmental entities, and based on that, they're gonna, they put together a packet. And so we don't have access to everything, but then they'll price it based on what we do need.
Okay, okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? All right, council?
I move that we approve the purchase of Westlaw online and print legal research product for the city attorney's office as presented.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Hoskins, for the approval to authorize the purchase of Westlaw online and print legal research products for the city attorney's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is the professional architectural services.
Madam President, Deputy City Administrator John McCarina will be presenting this item.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We maintain contracts with multiple architectural firms to give us a broader skillset and allow for quicker competitive pricing. Recently purchasing advertising RFQ with Mitten, the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, for architectural services. This was also advertised in several Chamber of Commerces and the Southfield Sun to give us a broader, more diverse pool of applicants. Seventy-four firms downloaded the application, eleven applied, six were interviewed, and four were selected. Tonight, we're recommending OHM Advisors out of Columbia, DLZ out of Detroit, A3C out of Ann Arbor, and SDG Associates out of Detroit. As you know, OHM does a lot of work for us, including our comprehensive needs assessment. A3C is currently overseeing the escalator removal in the Police Department. And both DLZ and SDG are self-certified through Mitten as minority contractors. We're recommending offering all four firms a two-year contract with the option of two one-year extensions. If anyone's prepared for any questions?
Council? Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you, John. There's no fee with these, there's no fiscal impact with these, with this agenda item unless we use those firms for a project, is that correct?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay, and then when we have a project, we'll use, we'll put it out to them, and they'll do their own bidding and everything else?
Yes, what this does is it really allows us to focus on special skills between the firms and price, so we can quickly obtain those competitive prices. You're right, and we would still follow our purchasing rules as far as amounts and bids, but we would not have to go through the qualifications for every process, so we can act more efficiently.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, Councilman Brightwell?
John, this is obviously, this is just a curiosity question. Just in general, how much have we spent historically for architectural services, other than, you know, special needs or something? Do we have a pattern, or kinda like a baseline, what we typically spend on architectural services?
I don't think we have a, I don't have the baseline handy, although it may not be even applicable to our future. As you know, the OHM Advisors has recommended investments in the city property, and counting the years that we have not been able to do anything, we're at a recommended investment of 46 million, so it's anticipated that we will hopefully be making more use of these firms than we normally do. But I can certainly work with accounting to give you a recent year report on what we've spent with our architectural firms.
Yeah, well, I was just curious whether or not we have a historical pattern. I know year by year, it all depends on incident, if certain things pop up, we get a blip, we, but whether or not we historically spent a million five, you know, just, just on normal. If you, not spend a lot of time on it, this is more curiosity question. I know we have that comprehensive need assessment and all that jazz, but I'm just looking at, you know, architectural services and, that are standard services for a city outsized, and, you know, what we have been spending, not the norm, the exception to the norm.
That is a good point, and I will work with Finance to put some data together and share it with council.
Okay, no rush on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, are we prepared to?
Other than that, madam chair, I move that we approve the request for professional services as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the professional architectural services as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We have no ordinances, and that brings us to our communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected officials performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent, then, when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace. By disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city's council, it may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. That being said, we are now under the communications piece. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to this council this evening, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes.
I have often wondered, Greg Keeler's, resident of Southfield, I've often wondered why you read that before the residents speak, as opposed to council. Because in my decade of being here, all the things that y'all might be upset about has came from people of council. People of council have called our people's name, people of council have fussed at each other, and have did all types of disgraceful things. So, why don't you read that when council's up there? And I have spoke to a couple of y'all about council people speaking and saying people's names, and doing some things, and called them out on it, and two or three of them have gone back to apologize to people for their inappropriate behavior. Now, the nice thing I like is, our city administrator, first thing he did was introduce me to the chief of police. He wasn't on call to police on me. Now, at the George Floyd, and it was supposedly heard all around the world, what happened to here in Southfield? You don't call the police on somebody? You called the police on me, I don't expect a good outcome. I'd have been pulled over for driving my own car, I'd have been pulled over while walking to my car, I have been pulled over and told all types of different stuff. So, calling the police on me is a threat. And I don't take it lightly at all. And if I end up in court because you called the police on me, and I got a record now for just speaking up after MLK Day, that seems kinda funny. So, y'all are throwing King in too for speaking up, and speaking out, and having to say what he had to say? In a decade ago, none of this crap would have been written down, or anything said about that. And the way I've seen some men up here speak about women, or speak and say things to women, and ain't not a councilperson said anything. Quiet. I wonder why? Now, according to the pool, I should, I would think y'all would go with an indoor enclosed pool as a dome pool, because of our temperatures up here and everything else, and because of all the different pools, because I am a WSI, I am a lifeguard, I did all that through high school and college. I swam through school and everything else, and I have swam in national master meets. There are a couple of people that swim master meets and are known nationally throughout Southfield that live in the city of Southfield. If you had built the eight-lane pool, it would be one of the greatest things. If you built one over ramp, they'll allow handicapped people to get in and get out of the pool, so as they walk in, it would slope down slowly into the pool, and they can walk in a zigzag circle. That would be one of the best things.
Mr. Keeler?
I also ran one of the first adaptive aquatics programs out here in the city of Berkeley.
Excuse me, Mr. Keeler. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Nope.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight? All right, seeing none, I'll say our communications are now closed. Council, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. To our city administrator, can we check into, just turning the microphones up a little bit? I don't know if it's because of the shields, but, I mean, I personally am just having a little bit of a hard time hearing, but, so if we could do that, I would appreciate it, especially those that are speaking at the microphone, and even when Mr. Keeler spoke, it was hard to hear him. For those of you who are not aware, the federal government is offering free COVID tests to be sent to your home. They were, you were able to order them a few weeks ago online. If you haven't ordered your test, you can go to USPS.com or covidtest.gov. All you have to do is fill in your name and address, and they will send you four COVID test kits. They are arriving this week. I know several people that have already received them. So, it's good to have in your home, in case you're not feeling good, even though it's not 100% effective, it could identify whether you have COVID or not. Also, for those who are not aware, the state of Michigan is also issuing free N95 masks. They said that they're available at all Kroger drugstores and Myers. I personally was only able to find them at Myers. It seemed like they had a lot of masks. There were many people taking them, and they are giving out three N95, not the K95, but three N95 masks per fam, per individual, excuse me. Supposedly tomorrow, the drugstores, and I believe Krogers are going to have them, so take advantage of this opportunity. And then I just would like to also remind everyone, just to, please continue to wear your mask, you know, stay safe, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple items. One that deals with the veterans issue. Many people experience, this is an adult issue, just in case we have young people listening. Many people experience sexual assault or sexual harassment during their military service. And the military has designated that as military sexual trauma, MST. And as a result of that, the VA has developed a program we call Beyond MST, Beyond Military Sexual Trauma. It's a free self-help mobile app designed specifically, specifically to support the health and well-being of MST survivors. And this, this particular item is, is in addition to the mental health you're getting from your primary care provider, and it's not to be, to interfere with that help. But to get this particular app, I'm sorry, I'm reading my page here, you will go to the App Store, and it's called Beyond MST, that's Military Sam Thomas MST, in the App Store, and it's a program called Beyond Military Sexual Trauma. The other item I have, which is not quite as terrifying, I just want to announce that Morehouse College, in the honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, who's a graduate of Morehouse in 1948, Morehouse is waiving all application fees between now and February 1. So, any individual interested in applying to Morehouse College, this is just King, this was just announced yesterday, they will be waiving all application fees. And Morehouse stated that we want to make sure our prospective students have the opportunity to follow in Dr. King's footsteps by getting the application in today. If you have questions, contact Officer Admissions at morehouse.eud. That's admissions@morehouse.eud. And your application fee is waived. I recall when I was applying to college, that the application fee was money that I thought about, whether we come up with an application. The other item I want to bring up, madam chair, I want to bring, ask about the item, we came up back in September, I would like to see, can we get it back on the council agenda that deals with the council expenditure fund, council, the councilmen will have allocated money to us, and the Finance Committee, the three council members there, and plus our fiscal director, they worked hard to develop that document. It was a very good document, and I would like to see it, you just dealt with. And that document, I've told this story before, the document was generated when our new council person asked me, what can they spend their money on? And so, I mentioned what I knew from a historical standpoint, and I recall when I first got on council, our then-city attorney and our then-city clerk set the two council people down and walked us through the expenditure of funds, and literally told us when it was payday, you know, everything, that a councilperson need to know. And I think that that might have gone under the, under the bridge now, but I would like for one of those items, at least the expenditure of council allocated funds, and we'd like to, and this, this came before council before, but it, it was tied 3-3, but hopefully, if it comes back, and we have all council people here to vote on it, and we just get this out of the way, and I'll be silent with this, but it's, it's just a template to be worked on as we progress in life, or we progressing as a council. in life or we progressing as a council. It's just a template, we can massage it, add something, delete something based on situations or based on what society is doing. And, but the Finance Committee, we had two senior council members and our very respected financial manager work on it, so it's a good document.
And thank you for your comments and with all due respect, we heard you very loud and clear. That is something that you and I have spoken about several times. We are having that looked at. By that, the "we" that I'm speaking of was our financial director, Mr. Austin Michaels, as well as our city administrator, as well as our city clerk. And they are still reviewing it. They will have something prepared to present to our council. And this is something from that conversation or meeting that we had. We are also receiving a monthly expenditure report for whatever council spends. We do have that coming to us now from that meeting that we had. And so, you will be seeing something from, and I'm sorry that the clerk isn't here to give us an update on that, but we did meet and talk about that based on the conversation that I had had with you. And I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Banks and Ari and Jason already gave their opinions and I heard them at the meeting. So, we are looking at it and we are going to come back to you with some other, with the ideas after the discussion because it is, it has been talked about. We are currently making changes, adding things and will be bringing that back and we will be doing this on a regular basis for council. Anything else?
No, that was it. But I do want to make a notice too, that individuals, sometime I made these announcements. Tonight I did obviously about a veteran and also something about Morehouse. And if you happen to know someone who's a veteran and or someone who has a child applying to Morehouse, just pass the word on, it might not be applicable to you as an individual, but most of these things that I bring forward, they, they can be useful for somebody in your neighborhood, a neighbor, a relative or friends that is a case of passing on very useful information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to encourage our residents. I know that we talked about our Parks and Rec Master Plan this evening, but if you haven't had a chance to review it, it is available online. You can take a look. It is a lot, a great, a lot of great information that is available. One of the things that our Parks and Rec Department is doing as well, they've partnered with AARP and will be assisting senior residents with their taxes. The program's goal is to offer complimentary tax preparation to help anyone regardless of age, but the emphasis is anyone over 50 years of age who cannot afford to have professional tax assistance. The tax aid volunteers are trained and IRS certified and all tax help is by appointment only and service space is limited. To schedule it, you can call the Senior Services Office at 248-796-4650. That's 248-796-4650. All participants must have an email address to utilize the service and they are scheduling appointments starting February 1st through April 8th. So, if you do need, if you, you need help or you know someone else who needs help with their tax services, please make sure to pass this information along. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing more to add. That's already been said, to stay safe, continue to wear a mask and take care of ourselves. So, thank you, council, for your comments and participation tonight. Mayor?
Yes. At your desk this evening, I placed a packet of buttons that we produced in our community relations office, COVID-19 vaccinated. I would encourage you to wear these and distribute the packet of buttons, people. We're still encouraging people to get vaccinated if they're not, also boosted as it's very clear that if you are vaccinated and had the booster, unfortunately, people are still becoming ill with COVID. It's not as severe and the likelihood of death is greatly reduced. So, once again, I would encourage you to wear the pin and also distribute them to people you come in contact with. I have two other announcements that come from our Career Center, our Michigan Works One is there is money available for people who are, young people who are in school and have children. So, you can apply for a special scholarship. It's $1,200 to go towards childcare in a licensed childcare facility. So, childcare, I'll just read this if I may. Childcare is a challenge for many Oakland County families, eligible workers or those enrolled in qualified post-election, post-secondary education or credential programs are invited to apply for special childcare scholarship from Oakland County, made possible through the American Rescue Plan. And so, if you're interested in this, investigating this, see if you would be eligible for a $1,200 scholarship for childcare, the number is 248-796-4580. And again, that's at our Michigan Works Office on Civic Center Drive on the campus of Lawrence Tech, again, 796-4580. And then in addition, there's also money available for futures for frontliners or reconnect programs. Eligible Oakland County residents can take advantage of additional financial help. And to help achieve your career goals, we have partnered, this is the county, with Oakland County, Michigan Works, Oakland Community College to offer additional financial support to pay for books, supplies, transportation, childcare and other related expenses while you were enrolled in the Futures for Frontline Liners or Reconnect programs at OCC. Again, this is part of the American Rescue Plan. Again, the same number, 248-796-4580 to apply or to see if you're eligible for this funding. Once again, the money is going for, for people and it's sitting there. So, money remains available. Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't know, but I, it's good to hear that people are listening.
Mm-hmm.
I got a text, people wondering how can they find out about the MST item I brought up with the veterans, so if I could respond?
Yes, please.
Okay. The Beyond Military Sexual Trauma, that is M as in Mary, S as in Sam, T as in Tom, that is the acronym. And all that information with Beyond MST is secure and private. You do not have to set up an account, it is 100% private. And how you will get that is you will go to the App Store and it's called BEYOND, that's B-E-Y-O-N-D, MST, that's Mary, Sam, Tom, BEYOND MST, and that's in the App Store. And you would obviously download that app and you can utilize it. You do not have to set up an account, but you can utilize the resources that are there. And if you are a veteran and you are being, you have concerns about sexual trauma, you would have a primary care doctor at your VA facility, the one that you're currently seeing. In addition, this will be, so Beyond MST is a supportive document, a supportive avenue for, to help you deal with that particular issue. And it is approachable from the App Store and on your, on your cellphone, MST, Beyond MST. So, but if there are still ambiguities or there are still concerns, I can, you can reach me by way of telephone here at the city, 248-796-5150. And I can obviously share with you what I have and or give you a contact with the military veterans in Oakland County and also with the military veterans at the Dingle Hospital and also the military veterans contact at the Ann Arbor Hospital. So, I do appreciate you asking, the audience asking questions and feel free to ask questions. And that's why I do this. I know there's, I know there's an audience for this type of info. And we have about 7,000 to 8,000 veterans in the city of Southfield. I know that from my days as being the chairman of the Veterans Commission, I had to look at the census to, this was a few years back, but it's between 7,000 and 8,000 veterans in the city of Southfield. But feel free always to, to reach out and I will amplify whatever I do have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the council for your support on the Parks and Rec Master Plan and again, just recognize Terry Fields and her team, our friends at OHM, for getting us to this point. I'm excited about the opportunity that it provides for the city. In addition, last Friday, the Finance Committee had the presentation of the annual audit. Our finance director, Austin Michaels, will be coming to council to present the audit. In addition, we are very in the midst of our migration from the Eden Accounting System to BSNA and a lot of staff efforts are going in and I'm excited because this really will enhance the city's reporting abilities financially, the integration between the investments we've made the last few years in the building department and our assessor's office for these systems to come together. The water bills are now going out in BSNA. If you look online, bring up your address, you're getting a much more robust amount of information for our residents. So, I'm excited about that and I, I know my team is excited about that and I appreciate council's investment in allowing us to make that happen. In addition, I would just want to piggyback on Councilman Mandelbaum's comment about taxes. With the CARES money and the tax credits, whether it's for our seniors and our families who may have not bothered to file taxes because their incomes were fixed, this is the year that they should do it. There are more dollars available in credits that our folks should be working to secure, whether they're the energy heating cool credits or credits for a low income or income-eligible family. Those make a difference. I always want to see the money come back to our local, to our community and to our local economy. And that matters, you know, matters when that scorecard, when those dollars are, are coming here. That's all I have this evening. I do want to comment on Monday, the cancellation. I want to just recognize Deputy Administrator McReena, Antonio Adams and Dwayne Richards for the work they did. Sunday night, the power went out. They were, they were here from 9 till 1 o'clock the next day and till 6 o'clock when the power came back on. There was a cable that malfunctioned on DTE's part and the communication systems that council's invested in for enhancing our ability to communicate with our employees ever bridge worked very well. Notices were sent out. We were able to notify our employees around 6:45 that we were going to do a delayed start around 10:30, 11 o'clock when it was clear that City Hall would not be opening at noon. We canceled and messaged to our employees that we'd be closed for the day and it was pretty close. I, at one point, we had our teams from our energy, our HVAC consultants, bumbler in the library, TSI for our municipal campus and our electricians onsite, ready to wire emergency generators so that we'd be able to keep the buildings at a temper, temperature that would not have facility damage, pipes bursting and such. We do have a good amount of the library and police department and lighting and our information systems on backup generators. And so, those investments the city's made historically, there's probably some room for improvement and I could tell you facilities have already started an evaluation of what we can do. And it may be some future energy things, moving more of our lights to LED lighting to free up space on the generator so we can operate an air handling system. So, expect more on that and I appreciate the investments council's made to allow us. And the old days of having to call all the managers and directors and I hope they could reach their people were real difficult and people got texts, they got phone calls, they got emails and we were pleased with how that worked. So, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for reminding me, I meant to mention that. Yes, kudos to all of the employees, yourself, along with John and everyone else that worked diligently to get us back online. They worked with DTE to get us back. So, thank you so much. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening. I have nothing further to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the clerk?
Good evening, I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you. Treasurer is not here, planner, assessor. Okay. Anybody have anything else tonight? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.